We're going to call to order, um, meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission. Regular meeting and agenda, October 24th, 2013. And would you join us for, after we have a call to order and we'll call to pledge? I always get that backwards.
Thank you. Mr. DeVoe?
Here.
Mr. Watson?
Here.
Ms. Mattingly?
Here.
Ms. Probst?
Here.
Mr. Rollinger? Mr. Schrader? Mr. Stannard?
Mr. Vogel?
Here.
And Mr. Yockheimer?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a quorum this evening with six members present.
Now will you join us in a closing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business is the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting for October 10th. Anybody have any corrections? Mr. Rollinger's not here, we're lucky. So we won't have anything that goes into that. Motion, need a motion?
So moved.
And an approval?
Second.
Do we have, we'll just do a voice vote. Everybody approve, in favor of?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We will then move on to the requests and/or public hearings. It doesn't state on this form, but this is a quasi judicial hearing. And in that case, um, I just want to poll everybody, including myself, that you've not had any ex parte communication that would, uh, would, um, affect your decision here tonight. The decision here tonight is going to be based on what you hear and what you observe this evening. Anybody, everybody okay?
Yes.
I, uh, I had a chance to talk to, I had a phone call from one of the DDA people today, and all they really wanted to know was what was going to go on here tonight and what the procedure was, so it really wasn't something, anything that was influencing my decision tonight. Okay. In that, we're going to go to, to item A, case CUP 13 dash 006, SPR 13 dash 004. Tractor Supply Company requests for conditional use permit in site plan review approval of to construct a 22,141 square foot farm and ranch supply retail store on lot one of L. Clifford Edition filing number two, final plat consisting of 5.2 acres, 5.24 acres, and located at 919 Spruce Haven Drive in Woodland Park, Colorado. Lisa, four is yours.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Commissioners, for being here this evening and giving us valuable recommendations towards city council with this conditional use permit. This conditional use permit is for our applicant, Mr. Ray Hicks. He is here this evening, uh, representing Hicks Snidicker, Snidicker, excuse me, company. And he also has brought with him a couple of his experts from his project team. We have with us Courtney Brett, architect for this project, and we also have with us Richard Molladay from, I hope I got that right? Yep, just learning. For Matrix Org- or Matrix Organization, which is doing the engineering on this particular project. So, um, you've probably already understood that this is a follow-on action to several other actions with this particular case. Most recently, you heard the L. Clifford Edition filing number two, uh, final plat development case that led up to this, and that was approved with city council, uh, per your recommendation with those conditions of easements being put into place before final recording last Thursday evening. And then, previous to that, there was a code amendment proposal that was brought to you to change the, uh, language to include outdoor storage for farm, ranch, lawn, and garden supplies as found, uh, previously in our permitted use table, but excluding that. And that was presented to you, um, as a permitted use. You changed that to be conditional as a recommendation to city council, and that was approved at that time as conditional. And so that's why, one of the reasons we're here tonight, is we have before us a request for approval of the use of a 22,141 square foot, uh, farm, ranch, lawn, and garden supplies, uh, store and use in the service commercial zone, which is conditional according to that code amendment change that was approved on September 19th. And the criteria which staff uses to assess this particular conditional use permit in the service commercial zone, 18.22, which talks to the standards of the service commercial district, as well as 18.57, which talks to the conditional use permit criteria that it must meet, as well as 18.33, which is your use regulations and performance standards to the design. This first slide here is our zoning map of this particular area, and as you can see, it's in the purple color. That is our service commercial district. Service commercial district highest retail zone that we have available commercial-wise, and intended not only for local, uh, promoting local use of this nature, but also on a regional basis. And so, we feel that this, uh, fits into that use criteria. Um, also want to point out to you that this has been zoned service commercial for nearly 10 years. Uh, previous to that, it was zoned community commercial and back and forth, so it's actually been zoned for commercial for nearly 35 years. And you can also see from this particular zoning map that we have commercial to the north and the south, we have community commercial to the north, we have central business district to the south. And there is one business that's listed on here, and that's, uh, the Pike's Peak Credit Union, actually, to the east. Uh, there are several other businesses and, uh, commercial type of establishments going up and down Highway 67 in those other commercial zones. To the west and the east, we have residential zones. To the east, we have urban residential, and then we also have the two lots, uh, two and three, two and three, at the bottom of Clifford Edition, which are urban residential. And as well, we have suburban residential to the west. This is a snapshot, and you have a larger site plan that you got with your packets that we sent out last week. And this is to show you the whole, as a whole, the proposed development, again, 22,141 square feet for farm, ranch, lawn, and garden supplies, retail store, tractor supply company being proposed. And you'll notice that off to the east, we have the parking lot, uh, and I'll talk more about each of these areas in detail, so I'm just going to give you a general synopsis on this slide. Uh, to the south, and the reason for going through conditional use is this fenced-in outdoor storage area. And in that outdoor storage area, a raised propane tank, this is a 500 gallon raised propane tank filling station, um, that will be housed within this fenced-in area. And then off to the east, we have the delivery access. So the access off of, there are two accesses off of, uh, Spruce Haven Drive, and the one closest to Highway 67 and Spruce Haven Drive is for the customers. And then the one that's furthest west is for the delivery vehicles. We have four, uh, frontage to, we have four street frontages to this particular development. We have Spruce Haven Drive off to the north, we have Highway 67 to the east, we have unimproved Midland Avenue, uh, past lot two, what will become lot two after that final plat is, uh, recorded via Mylar. Um, and then we also have Coraline Street off to the west. Another thing that I'd like to point out is that there is a proposed sign, uh, that is at the corner of Highway 67 and Spruce Haven Drive. It's important that you understand the various areas that are being proposed for, and the differences for outside storage and display. Um, there are three separate areas with separate allowances. Briefly go over them here, and then I'm going to go into each one in detail. Number one is the fenced outdoor storage retail area, and that's, again, allowed conditionally, and one of the reasons for the CUP in the service commercial zone that was approved on September 19th. And, um, that code amendment change found in section 18, 09, 09, 0 S8 to include storage. And then, we have, secondly, the outdoor retail goods display areas, and that's in the front of this particular retail structure. And that, it has also been allowed conditionally through the newly incorporated design standards that were incorporated through that same code amendment on the 19th that was approved to section 18, 3318, 0H10. And then lastly, there is a proposed licensed flatbed trailers display area, which is just to the south of the parking lot. And this is actually permitted, uh, in the service commercial zone, as long as it's displayed 25 feet from any street right-of-way. And that is found in section 18 dot 09 dot 09, 0F2. This is just more detail, this is to show you, zoom in on the outdoor fenced area to the south, that's approximately 15,000 square feet. You'll see inside of it that raised propane tank that's being proposed. And here's that language that we just recently added, uh, per, on the 19th, per the code amendment change, and that states farm, ranch, lawn, and garden supplies with all outside storage of materials and equipment screened from public view by an approved fence or other suitable buffering. And as you can see, circled in red under SC, which is service commercial zone, conditional. This is to talk a little more about the fence that's being proposed. One of the things that we added in to that, uh, code amendment were, were certain design standards that we had. And the fence details for the storage area, our applicant actually recently brought us a sample, we took some pictures of it, uh, the scrim color, uh, being proposed, uh, green or black, I believe they're settled on the green. Um, and our applicant can, can talk a little bit more to that. I, I believe that Courtney Brett has brought a sample, actually brought the sample and could pass that out to you as well. Uh, and then below, actually, the texture is above, excuse me, and the color below. Texture is, is right here. And on the sample that she'll pass out, I believe it talks about the standards of semi-transparency, which also is a requirement, um, in that design standard. This fence will be eight feet tall, um, high, and that is to better secure the propane filling tank that's, uh, enclosed in that area. It will be bronze in color. There are also three outdoor display areas to the front of this retail goods store, and these areas are for displaying retail goods. The design standards that we implemented into 18, 33, uh, section H, our architectural standards, is that it would be, uh, below here, you'll see, um, it, that it would be at least 50 feet, uh, no more than 50 feet out from the side of the front of this particular structure, and that it could be no more than 25 feet from the front of the structure. And as you can see, I've circled their measurements, this is actually less than the 25, uh, feet, and then this is, um, the 39.5 is actually from this side of the retail goods display area, but this is an additional six, so we're right, still under that 50 feet. Thirdly is the licensed flatbed trailers display area, and this is to the south of the parking lot. Again, I've shown you a picture of this area, and I've included the language that you would find that allowance, uh, in here. And we have found it to fit under section F2, which talks to the sale of new or used automobiles, recreational vehicles, trucks, motorcycles, snow, snowmobiles, uh, boats, and including enclosed accessory repaired facilities provided the area, and outside display is set back at least 25 feet from the street right-of-way. And as you'll see, under service commercial zone, we have a P, which means it is permitted. Next, going to just go into the delivery access details, a lot of questions have arisen, um, rose from the visits that we've received and contacts that we've received from several neighbors, and as you can see, there are some here tonight to talk to you, so I thought it'd be good for us to go over those details. This particular, uh, delivery point is approximately 17,000, a little over 17,000 square feet, and it ha- again, has access off of Spruce Haven Drive. Uh, there are going to be two full cutoff, uh, fully cutoff Shepherd's Hook type decorative lights on this side of the building. And there'll be another decorative, I believe it's, it's not necessarily going to be the 20 LED exterior wall pack battery backup. They've since, um, changed and altered some of their lighting. I'm going to have Courtney Brett, uh, talk a little bit more in detail with you on those changes. They're real fresh and new to us, so, um, if you have any questions, though, please ask them. Uh, the photometrics plan that came in your plan set, we gave you a copy of that, confirmed that the glare to the adjacent properties to the west and southwest would not be an issue. And actually, there are going to be additional trees that are going to be planted along this access, uh, west, western perimeter delivery point. And I've included details that we know at this time for that delivery. The deliveries will be only on Wednesday mornings, 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM, only two trucks per week. The turnaround was actually engineered to the type of trucks that would be used, which are WB65 delivery trucks. Uh, also, because we have had so many, um, contacts from neighbors and some letters, we've included a letter, uh, as part of your packet, um, wanted to address this upfront. We, there are three things that the applicant, uh, so far has done, maintaining a significant portion of that existing vegetation and trees, which I'll show on the next slide, um, how that compares to the grading plan, as well as adding additional trees along the western perimeter of that delivery access and around the southwest corner, um, as well as between the adjacent, uh, urban residential lots, lots one and two, and along the south side of Spruce Haven Drive, west to the delivery access point. And also, a six-foot privacy fence along the property line between the SC zone lot one and the UR adjacent UR lots, uh, one and two, I believe it's one and two, excuse me. I have it as two and three at the top and one and two at the bottom. And that is per the requirement of section 18, 42, 07, 0. This is that overlay that I promised to show you, and what this shows you, and also, just, uh, to let you know, a lot of this aerial is shadows that are created as well, but this is, and gives you an idea of where the grading will take place. And you'll notice that a whole section of the vegetation and trees will remain intact, particularly in between those residential areas. This is a landscape, the recently, uh, proposed landscape plan, and you'll see that they're also adding trees and, uh, landscaping this area particularly heavily between, uh, those adjacent property lots to the southwest and along the west of that particular. Next, I wanted to talk briefly with you about the alternative parking plan. This is something that was recently put into our code as an option. Lots of times, our, our code does dictate the number of parking that's allowable per use, but that's, um, sometimes doesn't match the use. And so, uh, in 2010, I believe it was, they added the alternative parking plan, and that was approved in, into the code, section 18, 39, 02, 0E. And what that does is it allows the applicant to propose the number of parking based on their specific needs, because each need can be unique. And they have provided us with data that's unique to similar stores, and then given us numbers that account for the peak hour vehicles, the total peak hour vehicles, and translated that, also considering their peak hours, as well as the average time spent, which is 15 to 20 minutes, uh, is spent on average by a customer inside the store. So if you take the customers, 27.5, plus the four employees, and the two, you come up with an average of 33.5, rounding that up, their required parking came to 34 parking spaces, and the required per code was 111, and then the provided parking spaces was 63. So they are doubling the number that they came up to at 34 in order to accommodate for snow storage spaces, which is allowable for taking some of your parking spaces for snow, quote, snow storage, as well as, uh, for special events that they might have. Also want to point out, um, in the parking plan, that they have already incorporated pull-through parking for large vehicles, which considering this use, uh, is a good thing. Um, these are large pull-through parking spots that they can be utilized by large RVs, trucks, and trailers. Existing conditions, this is a photo looking north from unimproved Midland Avenue. This is another photo of that lot, and what exists, it's a vacant lot. This is a photo of unimproved Midland Avenue. This is looking east from the top of the hill, where, uh, in front of the neighbors, Mr. Heck, Heck lives here. And then also, uh, this one is looking up to the west on, uh, Midland, unimproved Midland Avenue. And as you can see, there's a reason that will probably remain unimproved. It's, it's quite topographical, topographically challenged. And then this is another, uh, picture, this is of Spruce Haven Drive looking west to the end from Highway 67. These are the building elevations, uh, you all received a copy of this in your packets as well. From the very top here down to the bottom, it measures approximately 30 feet in height, give or take, and then averaging across the total mass of this building, no more than 20.8, so it's, it's 20 feet, eight inches, is what it measures in height from here to here. And the code, um, has maximum of 35. This is a color rendering, you saw this at the beginning as well. Like to point out to you, the, uh, grounding that's been done to this building with the veneer, the stone veneer at the base of it, as well as the color tones matching the landscape tones found, uh, in, in the mountain environment, and the timber awnings and structure supports that go up to the awnings, um, and the decorative lights, shepherd's, uh, lights that, that hook down over the top of this sign that they've placed. As I stated earlier, we, uh, assess a conditional use permit to a conditional use permit criteria, there are 11 of them. I've really covered the bulk of this particular case thus far, so, uh, I will kind of go through these as briefly as I can, uh, in honor of time. Criteria number one, that the proposed development or use shall have demonstrated direct need to be located at this location. And of course, again, this fits and meets the service commercial zone intent, as, uh, well as the regulations to that zone. It's commercially been zoned for nearly 35 years, it's been service commercial zone for nearly 10. Uh, comprehensive plan map slates this for mixed use, both commercial and residential, and all the impacts have been assessed and are continuing to be assessed during the ongoing site plan review process that we have going in conjunction with this. Uh, adjacent property considerations have been taken in, as well as traffic drainage and infrastructure. Criteria number two is that it will not endanger the public health or welfare, and this del- development will be in compliance with the International Building Code. Criteria number three is that the proposed development and use shall not substantially injure the value of property vicinity's. And the lot has been commercially zoned, again, for nearly 35 years, commercial uses to the north and the south. The distances from this proposed structure to the residences range from 100 feet to 250 feet, uh, which far exceeds the built-in 25-foot rear yard setback requirement when it, uh, a rear lot line abuts a residential zone. The placement has been considered upfront by the applicant to be in the farthest northeast portion of this, which is reasonable in accordance with, with zoning standards, and the detailed site plan review, again, ensures that staff has the greatest possible extent in mitigating noise, glare, appearance, and traffic. And you'll recall, I covered all that upfront in the mitigating of neighborhood issues. Criteria number four, the proposed development and use shall be in harmony with the area in which it will be located, again, fitting into that intent of the service commercial zone, which is to, the, service the entire community, both locally and regionally, by providing a range of retail, service, and office opportunities. Number five is that the development or use shall conform to the provisions and objectives of all the city plans, and they are listed here, growth management, transportation, utilities, capital improvement, and downtown redevelopment. Comprehensive future plan does, uh, have this as compatible for mixed use in the future development, lends to the comprehensive guiding principles to sustain economic diversity and vitality, and also encourages this from regional business visiting the local community. The transportation and stormwater capital improvement fees will be paid prior to the zoning development permit issuance, and pavement improvements, along with sidewalk, curb, and gutter improvements to Spruce Haven Drive, will be conditioned to meet traffic and transportation needs. Number six is that the development and use shall conform to all city regulations, including, but not limited to zoning, subdivision, utilities, buildings, and construction business regulations and engineering specifications. Of course, we did that and approved the minor, uh, subdivision final plat on October 17th, 2013, that was approved by city council. And there's, again, that extensive site plan review, and there was a SMART meeting, along with many other meetings with our applicants, uh, and various agencies to pan through the details of this particular development. Number seven is that the use and development shall be designed, constructed, and maintained to accommodate the onsite and offsite traffic that's generated. And there was a traffic impact study that was accomplished, it's dated September 24th, 2011, or 2013, excuse me, and it was reviewed by CDOT and our city engineer. And CDOT is, um, since, this is a new development since I sent out your packets, so I've put it in red, as I always have with anything new, uh, is recommending, is not recommending any major improvements to Highway 67, uh, but they are requiring an access permit, and they are recommending that the access point be moved further, be considered for being moved further west. And staff will condition this conditional use permit to finalize access permit with CDOT and discuss further the access location. Also, our city engineer has reviewed this, and that's where those asphalt pavement improvements come into play. He has recommended that those take place, those have been conditioned, and that would take place all the way from Spruce Haven intersection at Highway 67, and then west up to Coraline Street. Criteria number eight is that the use or development will, uh, be constructed, designed, and maintained with the appropriate regard to topography and environmentally significant features. Of course, this is a flat without flowing water area, there are no significant environmental impacts. The drainage report was found acceptable by city engineer with a few The drainage report was found acceptable by city engineer with a few clarifications, updates and improvements. Criteria number nine is that the proposed use or development will be designed, constructed or maintained with regard to adequate water supply, waste disposal protection methods and water drainage. And this can be served with water and sewer taps once they're purchased. There is a water line, and we talked about this a little bit during the final plat, that will need to be extended through Lot One and that best location is still being discussed between our utilities director and NETCO as well as the applicant and engineers on this to find the best possible place for that. And then Lot Two, future developer and owner will extend that line through Lot Two to Midland Avenue. And again, there's a condition that's placed both in the final site plan and as well as the final plat mylar recording for the L Clifford edition that was recently approved. Air impact also minimal. Criteria number ten is that the proposed development and use will be designed, constructed and maintained to not unduly increase the public danger of fire explosion and other safety hazards to public or persons residing or working on the site in vicinity. There are no significant safety hazards. There is that raised propane tank filling station. We have assessed that to our section eighteen three three one six five, which actually has regulations and guidance put into, that would fall into this category for fuel accessory retail sales standards. And that's been found to have been met. Last criteria is number eleven, and that having to do with maybe requiring architectural design schemas and amenities or other aesthetic enhancements as approved or required by city council. We feel the design incorporates elements of Woodland Park's natural mountain environment. The applicant's been quite willing to do revisions that would make it so and also incorporating still their western flavor that is unique to their use that's going into this area. The fencing is required and it's being proposed per the newly adopted code, section eighteen zero nine zero nine zero. Scrim samples have been reviewed and for texture color and semi-transparency and those also are available to look at in person tonight. As I have talked far too long so far, I will just suffice to say that there is also site plan review criteria that we review our plans to. And all of those have been discussed through the CUP portion of my presentation, very similar standards, architectural guidelines, as well as performance standards and design guidelines, again, all covered in the write-up for conditional use permit criteria and explained upfront in this presentation. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. I'll read this verbatim so as not to lose any content. Approval, following conditions, prior to zoning development permit for construction of the new retail store, the applicant shall provide the following to Woodland Park Planning Department. A final site plan and associated plans will be provided in accordance with the section eighteen dot three four, inclusive of all necessary utility easements shown to meet the needs of the City of Woodland Park as dedicated and on the final plat. Transportation capital fees and stormwater capital fees shall be assessed and paid as calculated by the Public Works Director. Water and sewer taps shall be purchased in accordance with the current rates and based upon commercial fixture unit counts. Final landscape plan is in accordance with section eighteen three three one eight zero E. Final lighting must be pre-approved by staff prior to installation and be full cutoff dark sky to reduce potential glare to residents to the south and west in accordance with the section eighteen three three dot zero eight zero F of the code. Final architectural elevations with material samples and colors must be received and approved through the site plan review and include a sample of the scrim material to be used for the fencing. Final engineer stamped drainage report and all the necessary construction drawings are scrim material, screening material on all fenced areas of this property to include all display areas shall be maintained in good condition and replaced if there becomes visible weathering, tears, rips and fading. Applicant shall ensure that the raised propane tank meets accessory retail sales standards pursuant to section eighteen three three one six five. Asphalt pavement improvements to Spruce Haven Drive from Highway sixty seven to Coraline Street will be required to meet engineer specifications and must be approved by the city engineer. Any comments received from CDOT that are determined by staff and city engineer to be appropriate to this project will be added as conditions to zoning development. Final approval must finalize access permit with CDOT. You'll note that's in red. This is due to the correspondence that we've received in a preliminary fashion from CDOT just yesterday. All comments and issues received from NETCO, local fire department, will be reviewed and mitigated to satisfaction. Fire requirement and hydrant location, current fire flows from the fire hydrant at the northeast corner of the property are approximately twenty-seven GPM. FDC will need to be on the front of the building. NETCO review response is pending at this time. When Lot Two develops, the developer and owner of this lot must finish the water main connection from the northeast or wherever that is located, as that is being speculated right now and discussed of Lot Two to unimproved Midland Avenue. The domestic water service line into the building requires an approved backflow prevention device before occupancy. The backflow device must be tested by a state certified cross-connection control technician and the results faxed to the city and add our phone number seven one nine six eight seven five two three two. Are there questions?
If you would like, we'll go on to the applicant and then we'll have questions for both you folks.
Sounds good.
The applicant can come forward, state your name, all that good stuff and proceed.
Hi, good evening. I'm Courtney Brett. I'm the architect of record for the project and I'm hoping that I'm here just to answer questions today. We've tried our very best to work as closely with staff here as possible. We're really looking forward to being good neighbors. We're glad that there are people here that are going to be our neighbors so we can make sure we work through any concerns that they might have today. I think that you were very thorough in what our intentions are. We're pleased this is going to be one of our nicest stores. We're glad with the aesthetic that we've reached. And then there's one additional development that didn't make it in to the presentation that we talked about earlier today. I know that there had been some concerns raised about the lighting on our site. Staff had some really great recommendations and we were able to incorporate all of them. They'll be in the final site package next week. They include lowering the poles, no light spillage outside of our property boundaries and all of the fixtures now, both on the building and in the parking lot, are a decorative shepherd's hook fixture to match the aesthetic. And I brought this up.
Would you call it to the screen?
It is the green, right?
We'll make our final decision once we're able to bring the material samples for the fence as well. We want to make sure it matches as closely as possible.
How about questions from us? Who's got some questions?
Um, the, um, what are you calling it? The trailer, the permanent trailer? What is that? I mean, what's the purpose and what's it going to look like? I see nothing on it.
This tenant sells the low flatbed trailers. They aren't more than probably two feet off the ground to pull behind a standard pickup truck. Um, that's, and that's the extent of their sales that would be displayed in that area. They're kept where we have them shown so that they're easy both to deliver and to be picked up by a patron. Does that answer your question?
So there's going to be numerous trailers parked out there?
Generally, I don't know how many there would be, but...
I probably should come up and introduce yourself.
Okay.
I'm Ray Hicks and I'm the owner and developer and Courtney and I work together. The permanent nature in the description is that those, that part of the parking lot's dedicated not to customer parking, but to the merchandising of these trailers. So there will be, usually there are about five trailers that are out there. There'd be, and they're just small utility trailers that you might pull a four-wheeler or lawn and garden tractor on, but just small stuff that you would pull behind, you know, car or not a big tandem axle trailer or anything like that. But that's just something that's in the typical merchandise mix and there would be a selection of choices. So you might have a five by eight trailer, a three by five trailer, you know, small stuff like that.
Are they going to be behind the fence?
These are screened by landscaping.
During the fenced in area.
No, these sit as part of the paved area out in front of the store. These are separate from the fenced area and they're screened. There's a, in the landscape plan, you can see a perimeter of bushes that wraps around it that, so they are completely screened from the highway.
Okay.
No, I just assumed that any displays that were going to, like trailers and stuff would be behind a fence, not just...
The new, if, I don't know if I'm on or not, the newly incorporated code amendment that was approved on September nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, that only relates to the retail goods display at the front of this structure as well as the fenced in fifteen thousand square foot storage area, storage of equipment and materials off to the south. The area that you're talking about and inquiring into is already permitted in the code under the table of permitted uses and I believe that is F two in the table of permitted uses. So, and the only requirement in conjunction with that is the twenty-five feet from street right of way.
So this will be beyond twenty-five feet and will have substantial tree?
Exactly. Yes.
It falls under a totally different category. It falls under the category of the auto sails, boats, snowmobiles, that sort of thing. So that's why they were able to place it in this portion of the parking lot.
But it's, I mean, it's going to be, it's not going to look junky like a trailer park. It's going to be maintained and...
Of course.
They're utility trailers, the small ones you'd put a garden tractor on.
It seems pretty much like utility trailers, but...
Well, maybe they'll improve the lot in the town.
Are they all new?
These are new trailers that are...
They will have to be licensed by the state because it's a titled license vehicle, just like a car dealer would have to, they would have to, they'll have to be bonded and all the normal requirements that there would be with that. They'll have to do that.
I'm not totally clear on the traffic. So there was a traffic study done?
Yes, a full traffic impact study was accomplished.
And CDOT recommended moving the access point west? Is that what you said?
Yes, and staff is waiting for our city engineer, Bill Alsbach, to return from vacation to discuss this further. We just received this yesterday from CDOT and I think we need to discuss with them the unique parameters of this.
I'm curious, so there's access off of, the road's not on here.
Spruce Haven.
And was it considered ever to have access off of sixty-seven for those people going south on sixty-seven or is that, I mean, is there a reason why it wasn't considered?
Yes. Currently, the city has a draft access control plan with CDOT that controls all the ingress egress points. And there was no ingress egress points specified for this area between Midland and Spruce Haven. So that's an access control plan that is in place and being honored by this development.
I, I'm going north on Highway sixty-seven and turning onto Spruce Haven. There's no turn lane there.
One picture we have has a...
There's a dedicated turn lane. And it might be helpful to bring the traffic engineer up to the podium and he can explain the content of the traffic report and the method with which they studied this area.
My name is Richard Mulady and I'm from Major's Design Group. We did do a, performed a traffic study in accordance with CDOT and the state and local regulations. And so basically the existing facilities are adequate. I can give you the exact counts, but the right, the right turns and the left turns that are there have enough spacing, both number of trips, vehicle trips during the peak hour and also queue length, which is important. So they meet both of those requirements and actually they meet them with some cushion. And I can give you some, if you can find my...
How many vehicles does the queue lane accommodate?
Ah, well, let me see if I can find that. Okay, the, uh, let's see, and I could just read it. It'd probably be better if I read it, otherwise it'll be confusing. Turn lanes along Highway sixty-seven is classified by CDOT as a non-rural arterial per the state highway access code, which governs this. Left and right turn lanes are required along sixty-seven when projected peak hour volumes exceed twenty-five and fifty vehicles per hour respectively. Projected Saturday peak hour left and right turn volumes based on traffic totals, which is background totals and the projected, which would be, which would be, which would come from this development, are thirty-four and ten per hour respectively. So there's quite a bit of cushion there.
Does that consider anywhere trucks that would, so they're larger and would be, you know, queue, I guess?
The queue length spacing, yeah. The queue length spacing, the queue length spacing is based on a, on a standard vehicle that CDOT requires. So I can't tell you, I could go back and look, but we would normally use a standard vehicle.
And assuming trucks would deliver not on peak?
They're off peak hour.
Off peak, okay.
Yeah. I think Wednesday and the peak hour is Saturday when people are shot.
I mean, out of Spruce Haven and turning left or north onto sixty-seven, are they required to have a left? I'm assuming it's just two, it's going to stay the two lanes of, they're stuck left. What does that do?
Right, the existing, you're talking about the existing left turn lane at sixty-seven in Spruce?
Nope, I'm talking about Spruce Haven. I'm coming out of Spruce Haven and getting onto sixty-seven but going left or north?
What's the width of Spruce Haven?
Uh, I'm not quite sure.
There's not enough for two cars.
It's less than thirty-six.
Yeah, the volumes didn't require it, so I mean, there's not...
It doesn't require a left turn?
No, it just doesn't.
That'll back, that'll back traffic up. The left turn onto sixty-seven north will back up traffic turning right. And that's a hard turn, that's a hard left turn now onto sixty-seven.
Yeah, just a regular car. Not saying one, and I do, one of the issues that she addressed was the fact that if you know the area, people are going to be going up to Coraline, going across Coraline to the line on County Road or, it's not County Road anymore, what is it, Evergreen Heights now? And you're going to be, that's going to be putting traffic into the residential area that's not designed for that kind of traffic.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I say is that we studied and looked at the peak hours and the queuing is not, it's not there, so...
But those are studies.
I know.
Those are just numbers to us. That's not me sitting there today for almost ten minutes to turn left onto Highway sixty-seven in just a standard car.
And I tell you, just as a side, that's part of CDOT's, you know, part of why CDOT wouldn't allow an entrance on there is because of when you have intersections of that nature, they want to keep those access points away. So, so that's really, I mean, otherwise you'd have an access coming right off of the east, which would make it worse.
And again, CDOT did not recommend any improvements to Highway sixty-seven as, after reviewing this particular traffic impact study. Their only issue is with, is recommendation is the access off of Spruce Haven Drive.
So there's no right turn lane off of Spruce Haven? So there's no right turn lane off of Spruce Haven Drive onto sixty-seven south?
I don't believe so. Yeah.
No, but there, but there are two lanes of traffic, so there's, um...
I understand, but they're, they're two lanes, opposing lanes. There, there's not, there're not three, there's not enough room for three.
There's not a left on the turn lane?
It's almost three lefts, we need to back it up.
It's gonna back it up. It's, it's difficult to turn left there now without anything else.
This is between two traffic signals. You have the traffic signal at Evergreen Heights and County Road, which stops traffic regularly and creates breaks. You also have the traffic signal at Highway sixty-seven and twenty-four, which also creates dr- breaks. Although sixty-seven and twenty-four does have a lot more flow coming off of twenty-four onto sixty-seven. But according to the study, it did not recommend any modification to the highway or to Spruce Haven.
One of the things that I think will happen, and I tend to agree with you, Marty. There's sufficient space on your property to put a right-hand turn lane to the south on that. So that, I would think that a majority of the people coming out of there, especially for ranch equipment and that, will probably be headed towards twenty-four west. Okay, and there is a right-hand turn lane only on sixty-seven. There are three that come up to that intersection. There's, uh, there's straight ahead, there's left and right. It would seem that you don't, and maybe that's why they're recommending where that proposed access is. They want it farther away, is that you're gonna have people that wanna turn right to go to twenty-four west that are gonna be sitting there not being able to move because of the left-hand turn north. And there seems to be enough room along your property there, and I don't know what CDOT's involvement is with that, to be able to put a right-hand turn lane coming out of there, which I think would really alleviate traffic flow. Because a lot of your, the vehicles are gonna be going that way. They'll have far more that way than going north on sixty-seven.
Right, I would agree. I mean, there's gonna be some going north because of the farming of, you know, up to Douglas and Jefferson and whatever. But I just can see this traffic backing up and I don't wanna see it in that neighborhood.
I don't know if it's fair to say everybody, I think if they're gonna get a lot of local people shopping there for, it's not all, right? I mean, and wouldn't that violate the access that you were just talking about? I mean, if they cut into that property, isn't that violating that access?
I think what you're, you're discussing and considering, uh, off of Spruce Haven is something that, uh, the city engineer and CDOT and the applicant can look into in greater detail.
I'm not sure I would wanna approve it unless we know for a hundred percent that something is gonna be addressed about that access onto sixty-seven.
Well, we can, I mean, we can assure you, I mean, based on the study, I mean, you know, the study is a study, but...
But that's the study though.
Yeah, but it is based on actual literal counts and projected counts. And we, the, the information that's used in design is, has been tested and trusted throughout the state for, you know, years and years and years. I mean, I can only say that this stuff, you know, this traffic study I've done in the past ten years have panned out. So, I mean, I could tell you, I think, you know, in my professional opinion, there's plenty of, there's, you know, there's plenty of queue space and there's, there's space there.
To give you an example, for Woodland Station and the new hardware store, West Street coming up to that intersection and Center Street coming up, there were, there were right-hand turn lanes built into both, both of those arterial roads coming up there just for that situation. I guess what I would, wouldn't wanna see happen is that all of a sudden we have bottlenecks in that area and, and the city has to pay to fix it.
We could, go ahead.
I think I can, I can, and this is the good part about these forums. I mean, it's, it's a discussion up between the objective numbers that we get and the subjective realities that the neighbors and everyone can introduce to us. I think what we need to do is sit down with the city engineer and CDOT and try to put this right turn lane in because y'all have identified a real problem that didn't show up in the data. But it's something that we need to figure out how to make it work and not be a burden on our neighbors. I mean, we, the, we're not trying to come in here and create a problem. We're just going by just the, the objective data that we got from you and, but there's obviously more to the story than what's in this pamphlet. So we need to consider that.
And I appreciate you acknowledging that because again, those are just numbers and papers. They're not people that are living here and have lived here and know the traffic patterns.
We're gonna, this is, we're gonna fix it.
I think it's something that needs to happen, so I understand.
Yeah, the only, the only, yeah, can I, the only thing that, that I would caution is, is that the state, you know, has a say in it.
May not approve it.
They may, they may have a say in that. And so, you know, I think...
Well, we could make it a conditional part of it as long as CDOT approved it.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, we could go to CDOT and they'd say that.
Why would CDOT not approve it? Because we're just adding a lane to turn right to take some burden off.
Right, but they closely regulate the distance. I, I just, I just wanted to call, you know, CDOT is CDOT and they make rules.
Well, it's certainly worth investigating.
We appreciate your candid...
And we appreciate you acknowledging that, we really do. I mean, I love building, I mean, building. Awesome, but...
Fantastic.
It's a lot cheaper now on paper than it is and to, to look at it now than it is to on down the road and then having to fix it outside of construction, remobilization, so on and so forth. So I think it's a wise move just to, to take a look at it now. Whether CDOT approves it or not, it's important to look at and make sure that it is something that may be viable or may not. And they'll give us reasons for that if it isn't, so thank you for that.
Appreciate you looking at that. Everything okay with that, Marty?
Yeah, I just don't wanna see that traffic coming down Coraline and...
No, I understand. I drive in that area a lot and it gets busy there sometimes.
It's, it's, and those roads are narrow up in there, to say the least.
Anybody else with some more questions? Have we got anything else to talk about?
Those were my concerns.
My turn.
Does the proposed sign meet our sign ordinance standards?
The details that we've been provided do meet the code. We're, uh, in the process of discussions on, on other options as far as a monument style perhaps.
Where would the sign go?
It's, it's shown on the site plan. It's the corner, it's up in the corner of Spruce Haven Drive and, um, Highway sixty-seven.
It looks like a little rectangle.
On the site plan.
But it wouldn't block any vision of people turning?
Has to be high enough so it doesn't...
There's a twenty-foot site triangle that's required to be left, uh, open at intersections in our sign code.
Uh, question on, uh, item two in the conditions. Scrim screening material and all fences in the property shall be maintained in good condition. Does that apply to the cedar fencing as well? Oh, it says scrim, screening, but, uh, you're putting up a large cedar, large cedar fence?
This would apply to the fenced area to the south of the structure, uh, for the outside storage of materials and equipment.
Doesn't apply to the cedar fencing between, uh, what, what...
It does say all fenced areas on this property.
That's a screened fence. Our intention, we will maintain that fence. It can't be in disrepair for our purposes for, you know, for the duration of...
Okay, I just, I just wondered if it applied to all the fences?
I hadn't considered that until you, you know, it's just so common sense to me.
Again, if you drive on sixty-seven, some of those fences can get pretty angry.
Yeah, we need to, we'll have a plan.
Our last conditional use at our last meeting, we added that for the cedar fencing to be maintained and stained. And that's probably a good thing to do with everything that comes up.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
And the propane tank that's proposed in that area, is it gonna have like those metal poles or whatever that are put around it to prevent...
Yes, ma'am, the bollards on, on every side.
But, yeah.
Yes, and they're painted bright yellow. You can't see any of that. It's well screened, but once you're inside the enclosure, it's very well protected.
How does that compare in size to the other light propane facilities around town?
They're very limited available sizes. We're within the range. I don't know anyone else in town who might have one.
I was just wondering, uh, larger or smaller?
We were told that a five-hundred gallon tank is very similar to what you see if somebody has one at their home that serves with propane, the larger tank.
So just kind of a standard, it's not very big?
It's not very big.
No more than four feet high, probably eight, nine, ten feet long, that type thing.
Yeah.
A couple of questions I have. I show you anymore? Uh, lighting, okay. I'm glad you're reconsidering that because in the back of this building, we have that exact light here. And LEDs might be a little bit Kelvin wise color, not so good.
That's one of the things we discussed, and this is just barely outside of my expertise, so forgive me if I get it a little wrong.
If you look at Walgreens...
Yes.
And you look at Walmart, those are full cutoff recessed li- up inside.
Yes.
And they're not twenty-five feet high like your Candelabras are here. Which, that becomes a problem when you get up that high. It broadcasts that light over a large area. Where if you have more poles, and I know that costs more, and you have it lower, sixteen feet, twenty feet max, like the entrance to Walmart. It's very appealing, it's got a nice look to it, goes in with the neighborhood, and aesthetically makes the store look very nice that way.
And we appreciated that feedback. It hadn't occurred to us, but we did drop the pole height. And as part of the LED fixtures, um, our understanding from our engineers that he has modified the color to be a warm yellow, like a high pressure sodium.
Right, excellent.
Okay, they'll still be LEDs so that we have a very even amount of light and no hot spots or glare. Uh, there's still dark sat, dark skies, full cutoff, closer to the ground, and they're decorative now.
The, uh, the, the little sign thing we have on twenty-four that the city installed has got the wrong color LEDs. It washes out every bright color. You know, when you drive by it, you can't read it. It's just because it's the wrong color temperature in those bulbs, is what it is.
Yes, he modified them to be as close to the...
As long as you use somebody who knows that stuff, we'll be fine. You don't wanna put that up and it doesn't accomplish what you wanna accomplish.
Right. Is that, John, is that something we need to address in the...
The corporal cooperation I hear them working on with that, I don't think that's a problem because before it goes to council, will be, that'll be done. And any of us can go in and look at that after that's done before the council meeting. If you're not happy with it, you can sign up for the council meeting. Hopefully not. Anyway.
Similarly, like she mentioned, we removed the, um, less decorative LED fixture that was on the back of the building and replaced it with a decorative, warm, yellow tone light as well.
Second question, cement blocks. Now, when you get one of these that you can really have detail on, it looks like it's, it's a scored cement block like you would have on a basement when you would put a foundation in. Are these decorative blocks that are going there?
They are the split face. We very carefully fill to make sure that we maintain a texture and then they're painted.
Okay. Like Walmart, it's a, it's a, it's a fix, it's a...
Rough texture.
Very rough texture.
It's a rough, it, it doesn't look like somebody, uh, mason guy scored, scored the walls of a basement.
No, not at all. And you can barely even see mortar joints or anything once it's complete.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure on that.
Yes.
The sign, you left the sign open, said this is basically what it looks like, but it may not be this height. It may not be this width. It may not be anything like the picture.
What we tried to establish in the set that we provided was that we will not exceed any of your requirements. What we've talked about today is, uh, providing additional materials to the signage to make sure that it matches the aesthetic that we've established everywhere else on the site. So a lot of that will go through the formal sign permitting process. But for the sign vendor, we've started to, uh, I guess, put together our parameters together of what our expectations are. So far, what we've gotten was just the, the absolute maximum that they can have and we're working together to make sure that we find...
It'd look more like a billboard. That'd be a heck of a thing on wind loading. And that, and again, we can go in and look at that before the, before the council meeting.
Yes, those are all separately permitted.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
That's all I have.
Well, that kinda stops number four. Planning commission questions, staff, applicant. Any other questions of staff? Anybody? Then what we shall do, and I don't have a sign up sheet. Thank you.
It's coming.
Okay. Okay, we'll open, we'll formally open the public, the period for public comment. I have four, one, two, three, four, five people signed up. One is not going to be here. They have an attached letter that what, what we probably need to do is to... You wanna read it? Want me to read it?
I can read it. I can read it.
Lisa, that way if you can't pronounce the words better than me.
Okay. This letter is from Todd Wiseman. I don't have an address here, so I can't give you that. Neighbor, um, I believe. Neighbor?
General area.
General area. Dear Planning Commission, I was reviewing the developer's proposal for tractor supply here in Woodland Park. And as a normal citizen, I think it looks a lot like a large rectangle with what I consider to be cheap architectural adornments that do little to dress it up and make it interesting or appealing to the neighborhood at, or city at large. A few ideas. One, require more stonework and other natural elements. Number two, pull the awnings out more so they look less like adornments and more structural. Three, along with number two, push the entry doors in under the extended awnings so that they are not as visible from the street. Four, require a complete change of the pole-style signage. This is just bad. Additionally, I think the unfenced three thousand square foot parameter trailer and display area in the parking lot is a horrible idea. I'm not opposed to this development. To the contrary, I think it could make for a useful addition to the town. That said, unless the city requires more from major development like this, they aren't going to get more. I am not suggesting this be sent back to the drawing board for months and months of additional planning at significantly higher cost. I am suggesting the planning commission have courage and demand the project meet the standards. More recent planning commissions have sought for our mountain town. I think some changes to the plan as proposed would go a long way in creating a more architecturally appealing building that will be in our town for years to come. Sincerely, Todd Wiseman. Read into record.
Thank you. Wanna go ahead and read the next, just call the next one?
Sure. Okay, so we, hopefully I'll get the names right. We have Laura Pogue. And if you'll come up and then just state your name and your address.
Laura Pogue, um, I own the home on nine twenty-four Spruce Haven Drive. I did send in a, a, a letter stating quite a few of my concerns. I appreciate some of those concerns being addressed today. The traffic issue was, uh, brought out considerably. Um, I wanted to add to that traffic consideration. Uh, I understand that they did do, um, CDOT did their thingamajig, sorry. Uh, it's been a long day. However, they did it in September. Uh, that is not the peak time for that road at all. Um, that's kinda getting down to our non-peak times. So, uh, when they go back and discuss this, uh, right lane, uh, for turning, um, I think it should be brought out that during the peak times of the summer, where we have a ton of traffic going up and down sixty-seven, uh, fishing, camping, hiking, all of those things, uh, that traffic is gonna be increased dramatically. So I think that is something that really has to be taken into consideration. Um, along with it wasn't done during the time of the heavy snow season and ice, um, which does slow down your turning. It slows down a lot of things. No doubt the company is wanting to have a lot of traffic because traffic means money. So, um, the more they build up and the more people get to know that the company is there and wanna utilize that for their products, they're going to, it's going to increase. Uh, my home being on, uh, Spruce Haven there is right on the corner of Coraline and Spruce Haven. I do believe, um, even if a right-hand turn lane is put in, that, um, repeat customers will soon find out if they live... find out if they live anywhere down 67, which there are considerable amount of people that own horses and such, which would use the Tractor Supply Company's products, from what I've read on the internet. They will get frustrated very quickly. After the second or third time, they will realize it is better to turn left and go towards Coraline, which is right past my street to the stop sign, and turn right and go around to the stop light at the next street over, which I can't remember what the name of that street is. So, I do believe that it will eventually cause traffic to go through that area. So, those are just some other things to add into the thought process that has already been brought out, but not to beat it to death. I appreciate some of the changes. I appreciate the time that Lisa spent with me, going through and showing me the project. I think overall, the building is eye pleasing, pleasing to the eye. I like the additions that have been made. It's unfortunate, though, that even though the back of the building looks nice and is in code, far enough away from houses, 100 feet compared to the required 25 from what I learned today, it still is just, I believe, 100% will take away from my investment of my home. Especially if CDOT recommends to have the entryway moved further west because of possible traffic issues. That will now put the entryway even closer to my home, which will cause a lot more traffic. One thing I did not put into this letter, which I thought about later, and I haven't had time, I've been out of town. At one point on Coraline, the corner of Coraline and Spruce Haven, there was a school bus drop-off and pickup there. I do not know if it is still there.
It is.
It is. That is a concern to me for those children, for traffic increases around the time of them waiting for the bus and them being dropped off. Waiting for the bus, when I lived there prior, a lot of parents, because of the traffic that's already there on that street, would wait out there with their children. It's what I would do. You know, at this point, I would love to say this building isn't going to go there. That's probably not going to happen. The building's probably going to go there. I would propose some type of a structure for the children to stand inside of, to help ensure their safety during higher traffic times. I don't know who would pay for that, but that is a concern to me as, as a parent. I don't know if I have anything else. Oh, something I, was brought out in my letter was the delivery trucks and such. Unfortunately, I don't understand the delivery size of the truck that was brought out today by Lisa, so I say semi-truck. I don't know if that is a semi-truck size, or someone can, do we know?
You know, I actually looked for a picture of it online to get a better understanding of that myself. This is new information, I was provided just yesterday. Maybe the applicant can address that.
It would be, it would be, you see the trucks that don't have the sleeper cabin?
Uh huh.
It's a big truck, but it's just missing one section of wheels on the front.
We, we should probably address this afterwards, I'm sorry. I kind of spawned that.
Oh, no, I appreciate it. That was a concern that I didn't understand, the side of the, side of the truck. I'm trying not to be all negative, so I really appreciate the delivery times Wednesday, eight and 10. That's, that's great. Do appreciate that and such. Let's see. I think that's basically, you know, it looks like the water and such is being addressed with possible issues with pressure and things, so I also appreciate that. You know, as a homeowner, I purchased that home as an investment. My thought process was, the older folks that lived there at the time, it was quite dilapidated and was in dire need, so I have improved that home dramatically to turn it around as an investment. I know I'm the little guy, or the little gal, and I understand these folks have spent a lot of money and a lot of time, but business is business, so from an investment standpoint, this business is affecting my investment business. I do personally feel that with selling and buying, buying and selling homes and fixing them up as I have in the past, this was the last one. People are people. People buy homes on emotion. You go with your wife, you go with your husband, first thing they say is, "Oh, I love this." That's an emotion. "I love the view, oh, look how pretty this is." You know, the husband might be going, "Oh, honey, this is $20,000 more than we want," but, "Oh, I love it, I love it." So, it's an emotional thing. If we put a, almost 22,000 square foot commercial building, though that lot is zoned commercial, I understand it's been there, zoned for commercial for 35 years, doesn't mean it's appropriate, but it also doesn't mean that that's going to be okay for my investment. I do believe I'm going to lose a considerable amount of money. Will that matter? Probably not. Is it something I feel I need to say? Absolutely. Because Woodland Park is made up of the little guy, and that's me. So, I appreciate you guys taking your time and looking into the things and trying, though this building is most likely going to go there, I'm trying to make it as best as possible for us.
And thank you for your comments, because we're all coming up with things tonight. We've got a really agreeable applicant, which is unusual, to try to work these things out. And between all of us, I think we can make this a good project. Nobody wants to put all those cars back on Carolina and that.
Yeah.
And they don't want to do that either.
I appreciate that. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was also concerned with the amount of time, because like I said, I, my goal is to sell this, this home. I, my goal was to try to do it this summer, if not the very next summer. I have tried to sell it in the past, and the pushback I had from potential buyers was the business that is located there currently on the other side, problem. So, I just am, I'm not sure of my timeframe of how long it's going to take, that's an issue. If anybody wants to buy a house, I got one for sale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, next, next person.
Sorry. It's Luke Gilinas. If you could give us your name and address.
My name's Luke Gilgans, I live at 1011 West South Avenue. My only concerns, based on the, the way our neighborhood's set up, is our houses will all be over, so we'll be looking down at your store. Are there going to be giant package rooftop air conditioners and conduit and pipes? I mean, has anybody considered the look of the top of the building? And I'm concerned about the driveway moving west as well, like she was, because we don't want the building moved any farther back. And my other question to the commission is, why are we building new buildings if there's so many empty ones? Why can't they put this up there by the Walgreens or behind the Papa Murphy's, there's a big empty lot there? I don't understand why we're doing that in this, in this town, so. And the traffic, I'm also concerned about the traffic on Coraline. We have a lot of kids, one of mine, that ride bikes up and down the street, and there's a very dangerous hill past Coraline South Avenue North. The cars come up that hill so fast, and once you're looking at the sky, and then when you break over, there's children there, you know, and you don't have time to stop. So, I'm very concerned about that more than anything. I guess that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Al Heck.
Okay, some of my questions have been answered. I'd like to address to the city council and the planning commission, one of the concerns I have. I'm right here at 920. We bought the house four months ago. We are spending a, quite a few dollars in there to remodel, and I'm concerned about, this has nothing to do with the proposal, but I'm hoping that Midland Avenue will not go through there, because that is the purpose of why we bought this lot. It is at the end, there is a barricade there, and there's a steep hill. And if that, in the future, would be going through at Lot 2, I would be selling my house in a hurry, because I don't want cars speeding up there the way I can see that there's nothing to stop them. They'll be flying up there like you wouldn't believe. So, that's one concern I'd like to address, the planning commission and also the city council. Now, getting to this, environmental impact, tree removal. There'll be a lot of trees removed, but I was happy to see that they are willing to do, put some trees and stuff like that. My other concern is, can you possibly bring that parking lot down in size so that you could move the building more to the, that would be the east, a little bit more? I don't feel 110 parking spaces are necessary. I don't feel that you're going to have that kind of business in this small town. Mentioned about the building going eastward. That's important. Store hours, I'm a little confused. You mentioned something about that you would be doing deliveries on Wednesday, is that correct, sir? Okay. And then my next concern is this turnaround. Here's where I am, right here, and you're coming in over here, and you're coming pretty close to right in here and asking, why do you need such a big turnaround if you're only having a couple of trucks a week come in there? That's a mighty big turnaround. Is it possible to cut that back a little bit? And the last thing is, two things yet. Lighting request, I agree with the gentleman here, that having smaller lights, sodium vapor is a good answer to them big, bright lights, as they say. And one of the big concerns that I have, I was on the Falcon Fire Department for, as a volunteer for nine years, and I'm concerned about the feed and straw. Are you going to have that located in that building as a storage area? Okay.
You'll be able to address it after all of the publicists.
All right. Is this building at all have any sprinkler system in it? It does. Okay. How about for the straw and hay area? You what? Okay. The reason I'm asking this, council, is I was at the fire at Big R, and I did talk to my battalion commander in chief, and we found out there was a gentleman that went out there from Big R, had a cigarette, and the place burned. And I think there was 10,000 bales of hay in there, which was a lot. And it burned for two days with eight fire departments trying to put it out. And so, I would like to see that, that area is really taken care of, that it's protected. This is a community with a lot of trees around it, and everybody here knows that. So, those are my concerns, and I thank you all for listening. Hope we can get some of these things resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last one on the list is Mike Vandemar.
And just to clarify our process for a public comment, we appreciate hearing all the comment, and then at the conclusion, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal to answer the questions, as well as the staff.
My name is Mike Vandemar. I live at 220 Coraline Street, which is the corner of Spruce Haven and Coraline Street, which is right here. I wanted to talk about the lighting, and I think that's sort of being addressed. I think if you can minimize that, that would be a good thing. Also, the sign has been addressed. Originally, it was a pole, 20 foot tall, 12 foot? And I'm asking if, and I think that's already been, being considered, being changed to a monument sign, which I think would be, well, that's what I would ask to have. And the one thing about the traffic is, how big are your trucks? How big are the, well, I don't know how big the trucks are, but I measured, there's a turn lane here, and if you were to get a truck in, tucked into that turn lane, so both these lanes are open, you have 46 feet. Now, I know this has something to do with, with CDOT and whatnot, but I just want to bring it to your attention. An average truck is about, a truck and trailer with, with maybe a day cab, which is not a sleeper, is about 65 feet. So, anybody turning left there, and I don't know about motorhomes pulling a trailer, I don't know about the customers coming in, but that's, I don't think that's going to work, and that'll have to be worked out, I'm sure. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is, I, I believe there's going to be a huge increase in traffic on Coraline. This Spruce Lane, and mostly all this traffic filters down this way, and I believe it's all going to go this way now, and go different, to different access to Route 67 because of the congestion here. I think it's a great looking building, you know, and I, I wish you success, but I, those are some of my concerns. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that concludes the comments from the public.
You could ask if there's anybody else that wants to...
Anybody else? Want to speak?
Okay. Thank you, I just didn't want anyone to feel that they weren't...
At this point in time, we can go to rebuttal. I have a question, Sally.
Yes.
In, in addressing that gentleman's comment, I vaguely remember that when the ATV place took over that corner, that, where the word is now.
Big D.
That there was a vacations done of part of that, that street.
No, Midland Avenue currently is still a platted right-of-way. However, it is very highly unlikely that the city would ever extend up that hill, primarily because it does not meet the grades requirement, the maximum grade of a road, I believe is 10%, and that grade is much steeper than that. So, it's highly unlikely, and also, the way that the development has occurred in that area, it is not necessary for access.
The applicant would like to come up and address any of those items? That the, the public brought up?
I'll address the auto.
Auto turn, yeah.
Yeah. There was a question.
Sure.
Yeah. Sure, there is, exactly. So, there was, you had a question about the turning radius of the trucks? So, the, these lines are the old path for this vehicle, and that's run through a program called Auto Turn, it's based from AutoCAD. That is the actual physical dimensions of the vehicle, and it takes into account the turning radius of the tire. So, that is, that is the path that we'll take. So, what we did is, we took the absolute minimum path it would take to turn that truck around and guided as tight as possible. So, I can tell you that, I mean, that, that is from actual data from that specific vehicle. You have a question?
One of the, the other question besides that was, was the parking lot able to be pulled down a little bit from 110 parking spaces to approximately like 80 or so?
Sixty-three, sixty-four.
That would lead that whole project eastward, which would actually help you closer to 67 in the actual volume of traffic.
Staff has been really helping.
Staff has been really helpful in reducing from that required number in code. We've gotten all the way down to 63 parking spots. We've progressively been able to move as close to the road as possible. 63 is the number that we've got to, that we think is acceptable.
And if we can address the Planning Commission, please, that is who needs to make the decision.
We're just kinda coming along, watching the guy. In that earlier part of the presentation, they reduced it from the regulation of 110.
Under code, it would have been 111 approximately.
Down to 63.
And their alternative parking plan that they're allowed to present to us, proposed that the requirement would be 34. And then they took that number and doubled it for special events and snow storage. So there, it's, it is, it has been dropped down significantly.
60 percent, smaller.
All right, and I know we've, we brought up several, or we heard several concerns about, from our neighboring property owners. And we saw a sample of the landscape plan. Since the last time that we heard from everyone and we had seen some of the letters, we, part of our plan, we went back and we very intensely tried to look at landscaping, both on the corner, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but the first speaker across from her property, and also sir, at that corner between where we looked at here, at his property down here. Specifically tried to add landscaping in those areas that were closest to our neighbors. And the other question that had come to mind was the fire protection. It will be fully designed to the NFPA codes and will be reviewed by the fire marshal.
You want, you don't want a fire for bales of hay?
No.
Any more than anybody else does?
I do have one question for the whole City Council and the Planning Commission. I don't know if you've got a code up here, but in Falcon we did. And anybody with a 10,000 square foot building was required to have a sprinkler system in to help our fire department. Because 90 percent of our area was all trucking. And I don't know if you have that in, if you don't have that in your code, you might wanna plan on that for a future thing to possibly put that into all buildings. It will help the fire.
Appreciate that, but this one's gonna be fully sprinkler, sprinkled. It's gonna have a complete sprinkler system for this particular building in the area. Any other questions?
Courtney, can you address the mechanical equipment on the top?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. We have one store currently under construction that has a very similar scenario. And it's actually the approach, so we're on a corner and you see down on the building first. So we actually approached the design of that building from the idea that our, not only our patrons, but our neighbors were seeing the top of our building first. So that, that has definitely come up in the past. In the scenario that we have, we think that it's better to have them on the roof. The parapet height that she gave you is actually higher than the roof height. So we'll have screening up to a certain level by the parapet height. And then our units will be the only thing on the roof. We don't have any other conduit, we've got a very clean roof. And the units are same colors, the roofing material. We've been very careful about how they blend with the roofs. As you look down from your property, if you aren't screened from at least a partial view from the parapet, then you'll be seeing just a clean slate, single color with our mechanical units on it.
You may want to explain parapet for some folks.
Oh, yes, so our, our, we have a standard roof that will drain the rain and snow. And then we actually take our wall on all four sides up higher than the roof. We cut holes in those walls to make sure that we drain properly everything that we need. But those walls go higher than the roof, so regardless of where you are, a lot of the mechanical units, if not all of them, should be not visible from, from your location.
Thank you.
Yes, was there anything else that I missed? Okay, thank you.
One of the things that appears, and we'll do some final questions here and then we'll go on discussion, is that from this shot from above, the turn lane to go into Spruce Haven isn't terribly long. However, there's a piece of concrete there that could extend that pretty easily if it ever got to be a problem. If you notice on that, that white section on that map, and then it tapers going the other way, there's probably a good couple hundred feet that, if that becomes a problem, that could be made into a left turn lane and would handle a lot more vehicles that way, without doing a lot of major work to do that. Cause I don't think you can move that access point back without totally wiping out your whole plan. There's just no way to move that road back. So I'm, CDOT may be very receptive to a right turn lane, which will accomplish the same thing, possibly. When you talk to them about that. Okay, our next part is to ask any final questions of anybody?
I have a final question. So on the, when they do the traffic study, is it, is it, was it just, I mean, what's the focus? Do they focus on the in and outgoing traffic? And how, and the neighbor, how this is gonna impact the neighborhood as discussed by some of the concerned citizens? People taking different routes and is that all considered in the traffic plan?
Can you come to the podium, please, Richard?
It always seems like the question requires a longer answer.
That is exactly it. So, all the surrounding access points, all the surrounding roads.
So all the possible options.
Yes, and, and you know, it's very long and, you know, there's no reason to go, but each surrounding intersection's in there and we can, you can go in and look and it is a study and so, but every access point, you know, we could just, I can just kinda show you from here, but it goes through each surrounding intersection.
So when, so in this study, I'm assuming that they know that people are going to say, hey, this is a little, you know, that there's other options than just going straight out 67. And that the, the speed limit is, I'm assuming 25 residential in that area. And would it be, I'm not really sure how to word this, but do they consider the option of speed bumps or things to enforce the speed limit when the traffic increases to a concern? Children, others, I mean, is that something that's part of this study or is that out of scope or something like that?
You can add, in, in various traffic studies, you can add stoplights, speed bumps, other issues, you know. You can add different.
They would recommend that in the study, right? If they felt it was necessary, would be recommended.
Yes, so if you had an intersection and it was having these problems and you saw backup or speeds. For instance, if you had an intersection, sometimes you put a light in, not for that intersection, you put a light in to protect the intersection, but, you know, before or after it. You know what I mean? Same thing you can do with a stop sign or speed bumps, to slow traffic before it gets to an intersection. And so that is taken into consideration.
So I'm assuming none of these were recommended or we would have discussed that, right? So there are no speed bumps recommended this time? And then what would be the, I mean, is there an evaluation? What would be the next step, I guess, and maybe Sally, I don't know if I'm asking that of you or...
Well, I want Richard to explain level of service and how that is graded and how these intersections, all graded A C or above.
Sure, so level of service, each roadway has a level of service and that, so that roadway is designed based on speed, radius of curvature, curvature, slope, elevation. It's determined on how much that capacity can it take. And it gives it a grade, and there are different levels of service. When it reaches a level of service that is not acceptable, which means there's a congestion, that would trigger an extra lane, a turn lane, a light, you know, certain situations like that. So all the roadways, we looked at based on, you know, the type of use in the area, residential, commercial, looked at what that would generate as far as traffic per day, throughout the entire day, figure out the peak time for all of those, and then looked at all the different scenarios for when it, for when it could happen and which way people could go. Was that a fair answer? I just wanna make one note, and this comes up a lot of times in red lights. A lot of people would think that a red light, or just a light in general, would be a good idea. Sometimes traffic, you know, lights are not a good idea and sometimes traffic improvements are not. Matter of fact, a lot of times they may, they cause rear end accidents. So sometimes a right, a right lane may not be the best solution. I'm not saying that's the case here. But we always have to keep in mind that it's a integrated network. You know, traffic is sorta like a water system in a community. And so if you do something here, it affects something here, so.
Okay, but that survey was done in September.
I, I, I'm not sure when CDOT did their, and I apologize.
Because one of the things that came up tonight, and, I mean, it's very clear, there's not much traffic this time of year. But you start in the summer months and that, that traffic will 10 times over what is happening. So does that survey, does that take into effect what's going to happen? Or does it just look at current time?
CDOT has information specifically for all, all time periods. I mean, they have summer months, they have winter months.
You have historical data.
They have historical data and they, and they, they update this data regularly, I mean.
They extrapolate out the trips and the capacity of the roads, so it's...
So they look at a 12-month period, not just what was happening on the day, on, in September when this was done?
Can I, can I also, they also look at a projection. So this, so the traffic study is not, is not a snapshot in time even. You'll look at those projections as time increases because they know, and they, based on trip projections, that road will actually increase. And so, it's taken into account additional traffic in the future as well.
I'm concerned about kids. Do we have to rely on CDOT to recommend speed bumps or reduce speeds at intersections where kids may be waiting for, waiting for buses? I'm reminded, you know, it angers me all the time that we've got a 55 mile an hour speed limit by Walmart where kids are crossing, crossing that highway all the time, even though there's a light there. You know, do we have to rely on the...
We do not. The city is control, controls the local streets and the police chief, the public works director and the neighborhood get together and do a study. They collect data and the police and the engineer look, look at that data and then they try to get buy-in from the neighbors. If the neighborhood does not want a speed bump, then the city is not inclined to install one. So it's really a joint community effort between the police. They, they go to,
For a particular area?
They go to the Public Works Director, Bill Alsbach, and ask what the process is. And part of that process is to survey the neighbors to get their input as well as the input of the police chief. And then they do a small study to determine whether it's warranted or not.
Well, it seems to me that if we have something that's gonna go in, that's gonna have a traffic impact in volume and perhaps in, already it looks like there's a speed problem there. Seems to me something ought to be done about that in that particular area.
One of the nice parts about this development is that there will be a detached sidewalk along Spruce Haven and that will connect to the Highway 67.
All along Spruce Haven?
All along Spruce Haven to Coraline.
Would this process, the same process that we've just talked about for the speed bumps, could they do something similar for a school bus shelter? If they felt that the children needed a school bus?
They could.
Or would that be the same process?
They could look at that as well.
So I guess recommendation to the neighbors, it sounds like there's a process to follow?
Yes.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, our, our city engineer, Public Works Director is always open to input from the neighborhood.
It's, it's difficult to ask the applicant to play the what-if and fix things that they don't know is a problem.
No, I wasn't concerned about that.
That's the problem.
But the neighbors do have recourse for that particular issue that they raised, right?
Yes.
One of the things, if you haven't driven around like in Crestwood 2, there's now a speed sign up there permanent installed so that as you come through Crestwood 2, behind the middle school, it tells you your speed. It is permanently installed, it's a smaller version of what you see out on Highway 24. And I'm sure the neighborhood must have got together because that's kids sitting in that area.
Paradise Valley has one of that.
Yeah, there are, there are things like that that are available to solve that. If that becomes a problem.
Could we put in, on the north exit of the parking lot, is there any way that we put in a landscape median force a right turn directing into 67? So that nobody will come on that parking lot and make a left up into our neighborhood to go to the light?
That gets a lot more involved.
Yeah.
Doing studies to do that. When CDOT, let me, let me switch subjects just a little bit. CDOT obviously looks at that study, recommends for that study and protects themselves of asking a lot of things that they won't have to pay for later. I would assume. So if we do exactly what they recommend, you as the applicant, the city, and it becomes a problem on Highway 67, then CDOT fixes it. Not us. Is that true?
You know, if CDOT determines that there is a hazard and that there needs to be upgrades to the highway system because of that hazard, then they will try to program that into their budget. But there's a lot of competing improvements that CDOT doesn't always have the funding for.
The last thing anybody wants is too much traffic back on Caroline and people running back that way. We gotta make it as easy as we can to have people get out on 67 and not have the alternative taking place. That's a residential neighborhood.
I was wondering if I could say something about why this gentleman's up here.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing I forgot earlier, is that the turnaround where the delivery trucks are, I would request a sign there for the delivery trucks, right turn only. They are not allowed, the delivery trucks cannot turn left. My concern with them then turning right is I'm wondering if it's been taken into consideration the truck's turning radius of turning right onto 67. Yeah, well, and I, I love side dash backwards, I'm directionally challenged. I call it a highway challenge, also since I go along highway on my motor. But, yeah, so when they're going, like, their delivery is done and they leave and they wanna go back onto 67, they're gonna turn right, right? So that turning radius of turning right, that's, that's gonna be tough. So I'm concerned that those truckers are gonna have to leave out a little bit to the left onto Spruce Haven to be able to actually make a right-hand turn. Now we've got a big problem. Regardless of the delivery times, a delivery time like either at 8, depending on how much time it takes them to unload, get processed, get everything checked off, you know, regardless of the traffic, it still could possibly, like you would say, lights sometimes cause accidents. So all of a sudden, you've got a slow truck that's having to repeat upon everything. So my concern is that you have another problem that's there as well.
Okay, can I, can I grab my plane? So to the first question, which was the, which was the sign, I mean, I don't think that we, anybody would have a problem with that. I mean, that's a great idea. So, not much to say about that, that's a good idea. As far as the turning radius out on the 67, it, that, there is room, there is room for that. It, he, the truck driver will have to go to the far lane, I would assume. I haven't looked at it on, with AutoCAD, with Auto Turn, we can look at it. But that's the standard, that's the standard city radius. And that radius is standard in pretty much every city, and that...
You mean the far lane of 67, not Spruce Haven?
Yes, sorry.
Very good, all right.
I don't think so. And I don't, I don't wanna say definitively because, because I haven't, I don't have it in front of me and if I'm wrong, then, you know, that's not great. And so, but I can tell you that that radius on the corner is a city standard radius and it's standard for all cities and, you know, I feel very comfortable with that, that corner. So, that kinda addresses your question.
Thank you. You've done your duty. Let's, let's move on to the next session of discussion within ourselves. That's item number nine, where we begin deliberation. Express opinion based on evidence findings and courage of motion. We're at that level, folks.
I think it's wonderful, I think the building is beautiful, I think you've done a great design with it. I think you've done everything you can to...
a great design with it, I think you've done everything you can to address the concerns of the neighbors. They knew it was a commercial property, it's been commercial for thirty years, and I think you're trying to reduce the impact as much as possible, and I applaud you for that. My biggest concern is the traffic, and I think we're hearing that from all of us, is we don't want all that traffic going into that neighborhood, and so if there is something that we can do in talking with CDOT about getting an additional right turn lane to just help that traffic flow onto sixty-seven and to keep it off of Coraline, then I'm all for it. I, I think it's a great asset to the community.
I would, I would add to that, moving the traffic for the entry point for the truck, trucking further to the west, the practicality of that doesn't seem like it would be very efficient. Number one, it impacts the neighborhood further to the west, and I just think for the record, making sure that CDOT is aware, as far as only two delivery times, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to be moving that, and these folks would have to go back, number one, and moving this through process, you know, back to the drawing board on that, but if CDOT could be made aware of that, and Bill Alsbach did get involved in that, I would recommend that would be something to make sure that they understand that that's, that they look at all aspects of that. I know that they, I know that CDOT has their, their way of looking at things and their studies and everything else, and they know that as well as, as I do, but they, they, they do miss things, and we live here, we see this, you know, we see what goes on, and I think those recommendations are probably something we should look at.
Steven?
Just one of the, one of the things that I saw, and the public mentioned it pretty well, is that there is a school bus stop, I was aware of that, so I think once they actually mentioned that they're going to put in a detached sidewalk, I think that'd be adequate enough, you know, that, you know, this boat mentioning an idea of having a separate structure right there in case of weight stuff like that, but I feel like if we all feel comfortable with having a sidewalk there that it can be at, because there's no sidewalk on either side, and with the increased traffic, it might be dangerous for those kids to be waiting in that corner, you know, with the structure comes to fruition, so...
Other questions? Entertainer motion?
I would make a motion to approve, yeah.
Let me, let me, let me, I know what you're going through.
Okay.
Would staff like to recommend, what amendments you'd like to see in our motion to approve this? Put the burden on them.
Well, that's, yeah, because I don't know how to do the highway thing and...
So that we, we...
There is a condition already in there that catches a discussion with CDOT to address the right turn ra, lane, so we're good with what is already listed among...
As amended in the presentation conditions?
Yeah.
As amended in the presentation condition.
Okay, yes. All right, let me see if I get this right. So I would make a motion to approve case number CUP thirteen zero zero six SPR thirteen zero zero four, Tractor Supply Company, as amended?
The presentation condition.
In the presentation?
Yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? We'd like to call for the call question.
Sure. Watson?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Yoxheimer?
Yes.
And Devoe?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, and this recommendation will move forward to the city council, and that hearing will be on November twenty-first.
I want to thank you folks that are in that area. We share a lot of the concerns you do with that project. You've been a really, I commend you, you've been a really good group, we've really interacted well between the applicant and, and us and the staff to do that, and if you want to talk some more about it, be at the next city council, anyone is on the agenda. Thank you. Moving on, we have a report?
I have nothing to report, other than we do have a case on November fourteenth, so plan to be here.
That's how we make the big bucks. Okay. Any other discussion, comment?
Motion to adjourn.
All those approved?
Aye.
Right here.
Thank you.
Sally, you want these, uh...
Yeah, if you can pose backup.
So you get the news from the council?